Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of August 16, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith. Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan. And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Well, welcome to all of you. Thank you so much for engaging in the civic process. We appreciate that you're here. And we're going to begin our meeting with Pastor Ignacio Valdez of New Hope Family Worship Center, leading us in the invocation. Pastor, we're so thankful for your involvement in community outreach, in helping our city bring hope to the marginalized. We really appreciate that. Immediately after he prays, we will have Madeline Abernathy, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madeline is a junior at Bakersfield Christian High School. Hope you had a great first day, Madeline. She also is the 2017 California State History Day Champion in the category of individual performance for "The White Rose Blooms in Darkness," which is a story of a dozen German college students in 1943 who defied Hitler by spreading the truth about him through thousands of printed leaflets until they were caught, tried, and then executed. But Madeline represented California recently in the Nationals, and we're just so proud of her. So first of all, Pastor Ignacio Valdez, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Good evening, Councilmembers. We'll just bow our heads at this time. Father, we thank you for this day, God. We ask that you would continue to give this council solomonic wisdom, Father God. That, God, I ask that you would give them vision. God, what is hidden from them, God, would be exposed in light, Father. God, I pray, Father God, that you would give them vision, that you would give them, Father, also the wisdom, Father, God, to care for our city, God, as we are in such a difficult time, Father, that we would be individuals, God, that would create unity, harmony, and seek justice. God, I pray, Father God, that you would give each of us a clean heart, that we would walk humbly before you, God. And we would also, Father, love always in everything we do. I thank you, God, that you would just shed your face on this city. We thank you, and we all say amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Abernathy?
As this is my first day of school, I am honored to salute the flag. And as the flag is flown, over 131,000 public and private schools across the country, and over 55 million schools, students see it each day. And please do it with me. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline, you may be seated. To all of the parents out there, I hope your children had a wonderful first day, and thank you for reminding us about education, Madeline. And we're great supporters of education. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. And in keeping with City Council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. We'd ask you to be courteous in the use of your cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during presentations, but it's not allowed during the other times of the meeting. And for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. We appreciate your cooperation very much. And at this time, I'd like to call on our city manager. I think we have a new teammate here today, and so would you go ahead and like to introduce her at this point?
We do, Mayor. Breanna, would you stand up, please? Caleb Blaski left us recently to move off to Flagstaff, and this is Caleb's replacement, Breanna Carrier. She comes to us most recently from Washington DC, has a master's degree from the Maxwell School, which is a distinguished government training program in the east. And she'd previously spent a year in Bakersfield, so we welcome her and thank her for coming on board.
Thank you, and welcome. We look forward to working together with you. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation to Diane P. Martinez declaring September 2017 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Ignacio. Much for letting me be here.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez. Every year, over 15,000 parents of children will hear these words. Your child has cancer. And I know, Ms. Martinez, that you unfortunately heard those words, and the reason you're here is because of Ben the Giant Slayer. And so it is my honor today to be able to proclaim this. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield has officially proclaimed September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in our city, in recognition of the 43 children diagnosed with cancer each day in America, in recognition of the 12% of those diagnosed who won't survive, in recognition of the fact that cancer knows no boundaries, afflicting all ethnic and socioeconomic groups, in recognition of the 40,000 children who undergo cancer treatment in this country each year, in recognition of the local children currently under treatment for this disease, and the families that support and encourage them, in recognition of the children who have won the war, in recognition of those who have lost, in recognition of the fact that childhood cancer is the number-one disease killer of our children, and in recognition of the need to support local medical centers and clinics so that families may have the opportunities for their children to receive treatment close to home and have our support systems here. And it's signed Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. And I am pleased to be able to present this to you, and thank you for being able to join together and recognize Ben the Giant Slayer. Go ahead and make some comments.
Well, what an honor it is for me to stand before you, Mayor Go, and honorable City Council Members. Excuse me, I'm a bit nervous.
It's okay. We all get nervous. It's okay.
My son was diagnosed with a rare and aggressive cancer in September of 2013, and he fought very hard. And in June of 2014, we thought he had won his battle. We had a huge celebration on September 1st of 2014 because we were not aware that September was Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And so when I found that out, I thought, what better month to celebrate my son's survivorship of childhood cancer? In January of 2015, we were told that his cancer had returned and was throughout his whole body. Benjamin was then placed into palliative care, and we're very thankful that CBCC partnered with a UCLA pediatric oncologist, and they came up so that my son could get treatment close to home. You did mention that 43 children every day are diagnosed with cancer. The 12% that you're referring to that pass away with cancer works out to be 1 in 7 children every day that die with cancer, and my son was one of those 7. I'm standing before you today to beseech you, to help us bring awareness to the great city that we live in. We are so blessed to be here, and we have gold ribbons that your businesses can use to bring about awareness. And at this time, I'd like to introduce my friend Priscilla Russell, who is a cancer survivor, and leave you with this last quote. If we don't stand up for our children, then we don't stand for much.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I appreciate the time that you're giving us to talk about something that's close and dear to our hearts. My name is Priscilla Russell. I come to you as a breast cancer survivor. I have been in remission for almost three years. Although we are here to declare September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, I am here as a result of raised awareness from the legacy of women before me who fought for my life. If they had not been an advocate and a voice for me, I may not be standing here today. Because of the example they left for me, I feel important to stand before you and be the advocate and the voice to today's children. Childhood cancer is dramatically increasing in our local community. It's time for us to take a stand and raise awareness in our community, and expand that awareness past our city and state lines. But it starts here in Bakersfield, California, where I was raised in love. Today, only you and I can raise awareness. Only you and I can begin to support our local families fighting for their lives. Bakersfield organizations such as Hopeful Harvest and Second Start of the Right have been great examples for our community. Hopeful Harvest provides fresh, organic fruits and vegetables straight to the door of those fighting cancer. They also continue to support those families by supplying those fruits and vegetables for those who have fought, and are survivors, and for families like Diane, who still receive Second Start of the Right is currently providing gold ribbons to those that would like to represent and stand for awareness for our children. They also provide food, gas cards, gifts, and gift cards to families who have children that are in the fight of their life. These are a couple of resources available to families in Bakersfield with children fighting against cancer. Also, Dignity Healthcare has decided to take a stance and advocate for our children fighting against cancer by wearing gold ribbons in September. Although these examples of resources and stance are great, it's still not enough for our community. Our children's voices and authorities are limited, so as mothers, as fathers, as grandparents, sisters, brothers, aunts, and uncles, and close friends, we must stand in the gap. I implore you to talk to your school districts, school principals. Last year, Stein Elementary School in the Panama Buena Vista School District honored childhood cancer by going gold for one full week in September. And all it took was a simple conversation. You can do this, too. Talk to your small business owners and restaurant owners. These are just a few ways to raise awareness. Diane was provided, Diane has provided, and so as Mayor Go provided us alarming statistics. We know knowledge is power, however, acting is more powerful. Doing something and saying something creates change. I ask you, will you help us support our local fighters fighting a grown-up fight? Can you creatively help to develop change by becoming a resource? Will you join Diane and I and thousands of others impacted by this disease? Help us to raise awareness. Help us to gain more resources for local children and families. Be the voice of change for childhood cancer. Go gold in September. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing those stories. I know those are heartfelt because of the very personal connection, and I know now we have another item before us. Madam Clerk, would you read that, too, please?
Presentation of a proclamation to Rob Purdy declaring August 2017 Valley Fever Awareness Month in Bakersfield.
Welcome, Mr. Purdy. And I know that you also have a very personal story, and that's why, out of that personal experience, you're able to advocate for this disease that is such a challenge in our area. And so it is my honor today to proclaim. Whereas valley fever is a disease caused by fungal spores that exist in the soil of southwestern United States, including Southern California and its Central Valley, and whereas many people infected by the spores are never aware of the exposure to the disease, while others become ill in varying degrees, suffering, some suffering life-changing results, some suffering fatal consequences. And whereas research is ongoing to find a vaccine and cure for valley fever, it is vital that residents and visitors alike are aware of the existence and symptoms of the disease so that if it is contracted, early treatment can result in better outcomes. And whereas drawing attention to the symptoms of valley fever among our citizens, as well as those in the healthcare community, will create a safer, healthier community for all residents and visitors in the region where valley fever is a concern. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim August 2017 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in our city, and urge all citizens to be aware of the threat this disease poses to all who live in or visit our valley, and lend support to finding a vaccine and cure for this potentially deadly disease dated Bakersfield, California, the 16th day of August 2017. Mr. Purdy, it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Would you share with us now?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Councilmembers, as Mayor Go said, my name is Robert Purdy, and I serve on the board of the Valley Fever Americas Foundation. For over 20 years, our foundation has supported valley fever research, testing, and awareness. And I would like to personally thank Bakersfield City Council for the continued support of valley fever awareness and the Valley Fever Americas Foundation. As a lifetime resident of Bakersfield and a valley fever survivor, this disease is very personal to me and many others like me. And if you'll indulge me for a second, I'd like to share my story with you. In January of 2012, I woke up one morning with an extremely large headache, which persisted. I don't know if you've ever had a migraine for a day. I had one for about six months. I was misdiagnosed twice. I was told I had a sinus infection. I did two courses of antibiotics. I then went to the hospital ER. I was told I had cluster headaches. I then went home with headache medication, and the next day, I started experiencing vision problems. I returned to the ER at Kern Medical. At this point, I had a very slight fever. If you've ever been to the ER, they generally don't consider you to have a fever if you're not over 101. Mine wasn't even that high. And they said, "Aha, we think we know what you have." So I was diagnosed with the meningitis form of the disease, which is still 30% fatal today. Since 2012, I have been hospitalized several times. I've been on four different types of oral medications. The first medication I was on did not work. The second medication I was on did not work. The third medication I was on did work in conjunction with another drug that's administered, what they call intrathecali, which means it's injected into my central nervous system. That drug is called Amphotericin B, and it is injected directly into my brain. So this bump on my head, my unicorn horn, as I levelingly refer to it as, is a port. So I started treatment twice a week, having a drug injected directly into the ventricle of my brain. And I know that probably sounds horrible for you. It wasn't a pleasant experience for me. However, I'm lucky now that I only have to have that done every three weeks and at a much lower dose. There are those in our community today that are still having this treatment years in, three times a week. Can you imagine trying to conduct a normal life, raise kids, be a parent, be a provider with every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday spent in a hospital gurney, having medication injected into your brain? So the third drug I was on, one of the side effects is photosensitivity, so I ended up with skin cancer, which was, believe it or not, the insurance company's gateway to me getting on the current drug I'm on now, which has fewer side effects and works well for me in conjunction with Amphotericin B. So that's kind of a brief history of my story. Unfortunately, my story is not as uncommon as I would like it to be. There's some great misinformation about valley fever. For most of people that get the disease, 60% are pretty much asymptomatic and may never know they've had it. And those people most likely will never get it again. They'll develop basically an immunity to it. For the other 40% of people, they're symptomatic on different levels. Some require hospitalization. Some are placed on disability or never able to return to work. And some that are treated and recover relapse and can experience symptoms months or sometimes years after they've completed treatment. Yesterday, the foundation was able to present Dr. John Galigiani from the Valley Fever Center of Excellence a check for $75,000 to continue their work on a drug called Nicomiasin Z, which is a potential cure for COXI, which we lovingly refer to valley fever as COXI. Nicomiasin Z has an important history in Kern County. It was actually saved from the scrap heap when a previous developer went bankrupt by community members and the Cal State Bakersfield Foundation. This drug only exists today and is being researched and advanced today because of work done here in Kern County and Bakersfield. This is just one of many milestones in the history of valley fever that have occurred locally, including Dr. Murnie Gifford with the Kern County Health Department. There's a room at the Health Department actually named after her. In 1936, she recognized that was previously thought to be two separate diseases were actually different degrees of the same disease, valley fever. So San Joaquin Valley Fever was thought to provide, promote, and produce only flu-like symptoms, where there was a more severe version of a disease called coxidomycosis, which caused symptoms like I have, or skin lesions, and a lot of death at the time. And she recognized that they were both the same disease and caused by a fungus. Dr. Heinz Einstein developed the treatment standards for coximeningitis using the drug Amphotericin B that I told you about in the 1960s. He worked and lived in Bakersfield. As a matter of fact, one of his daughters also contracted valley fever. Continuing through 2016 with the Infectious Disease Society of Americas updated and expanded treatment guidelines, which were a collaboration that included local doctors, and it was greatly expanded. I'm happy to say that in the previous version of this standard, there was a third of a page devoted to the type of valley fever I have, which is coximeningitis. That resource now contains three and a half pages of data on how to treat that particular aspect of the disease. And continuing on through this evening, and Bakersfield City Council issuing us this proclamation for Valley Fever Awareness Month. We know that awareness saves lives. I also wanted to take the opportunity to invite those of you who are available early this Saturday morning to come out to our annual walk, held at Kern County Museum, Pioneer Village. Gates open at 7:00. We usually complete everything about 9:30. Plenty of time to go have a nice breakfast with your family afterwards and before it gets too hot. Also, you're welcome to attend and encouraged to attend our first vaccine research fundraising dance, following the rodeo, the Hattaway Mountain Rodeo, at the Rodeo Event Center this Saturday evening. And all proceeds from that event will go directly to vaccine research. We thank you for your support of our events and awareness, and encourage you to share valley fever awareness with our hashtag, which is #ConquerCOXI. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy. Ms. Martinez, Ms. Russell, for sharing your personal stories. We appreciate your advocacy. Councilmembers, I'm going to invite you to take a trip with me back to 1992. That was the year that President George Herbert Walker Bush was our president. Many of us were listening to "End of the Road" by Boys to Men. And in Bakersfield, there were over 186,000 people there, in contrast to the 383,000 here today. On August 17, 1992, something very, very important happened, though. But let me go back a little bit further. You know, before today, how many of you ever, or before 1992, did we have the Rabobank Arena? The ICE Sports Center? McMurtry Aquatic Center? Amtrak Station? Mesa Marin Sports Complex? Bakersfield Sports Village? Or the redevelopment of Mill Creek? No, we didn't, because somebody wasn't here to help expedite that. On August 17, 1992, a very important Monday, Ellen Tandy joined the team here at the City of Bakersfield. Mr. Tandy, would you come up here, please? You're going to kill us. You're going to kill your staff. But here we are, because you are so important. And thank you so much for guiding the Thomas Road Improvement Program. You know, every time I'm on that West Side Parkway, it's like, thank you. But thank you for all of those things that you've done, leading our city through unparalleled years of growth, as well as through those hard times where maybe you had to say no, but it was in the best interest. And you always did this, working together with all of us, because you were keeping the residents of this community foremost, even through those hard decisions. So just want to thank you so much for your 25 years of service. Here is something that we have for you in commemoration of 25 years. You can hold this up. This is a gift from staff. None of this was paid for by taxpayer dollars. It was all donated by your staff. You want to show this to the people? And then these are the traditional things. Did you have to sign your own? Yeah, you had to sign your own certificate of appreciation for 25 years of service, but that's what you normally get. And Chris Hewat, I think maybe I should call you up here just to put the cap on this, or Mr. Telya, whoever wants to come up here and receive the end of it. See, we're probably in trouble now for doing this, but you go ahead.
I'll hear about it tomorrow morning. On behalf of staff, Ellen, just wanted to thank you and the department heads put this all together, and just thank you for your years of service and your guidance from all of us. Thank you very much.
I think these meetings run too long, so I'm going to keep my comments really short. That's a joke. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris, and members of staff, members of City Council. I think it's a great pleasure to work here, and I enjoy coming to work every day and looking forward to both positive and negative things, and I appreciate the recognition. Thank you much.
And Councilmember Rivera was two years old at that time. He's reminding us. Thank you so much for your service, Mr. Tandy. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you plan to speak tonight, would you come forward to the front row, please, so that we can expedite this? If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. We would ask that you avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor, we have received eight speaker cards this evening, six regarding separate subjects, and two speakers on one subject. The first speaker is Robert Lansford regarding leadership for safety.
Thank you, Mr. Lansford. Please come forward and introduce yourself. For those of you who haven't been here before, that's the clock timer right up there, and there are three minutes, and we hold right to that three minutes.
Good evening, Robert Lansford. What I do here, I'm the first. I'm the first, is something wrong? I have a donation. I'm reading a book, and I'm still reading it, and each time I pick it up and read it, it reminds me of Kern County and greater Bakersfield, and the problems we're having here, the societal problems we're having here. I'll pass this on to the clerk later, but 40-plus years ago, I was a clerk in the Superior Court, a clerk to the judges. For a couple of years, actually for about 10 years, but for a couple of years, I was clerk to the presiding judge. So I know a lot of problems, as the commercial says, I've seen a lot of things. Recidivism is a terrible thing among the, excuse the correction, criminal factor in our society. I don't know what it is now, but probably the Pew Research Institute would probably say it's pretty high, and it's always been that. One of the things that drove me away from my job, cynicism. I just couldn't stand the thing. I don't know much else to say in my three minutes, but I'll collect these books and give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them to the different council people. They are not yours, they're donations to your office. Hopefully, they won't collect much dust in your office, but they will be used to guide future leaders such as yourself, and save some of the problems that our society is having now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lansford. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley Jr., regarding Marvin Dean, candidate for Ward 1.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Wendell Wesley Jr., resident, city of Bakersfield, Ward 1. I'm here tonight to talk about matters in Ward 1. Prior to coming here tonight, Mr. Marvin Dean had spoken with Ward 1 Councilman Willie Rivera. Some background, first, July 28th, 2017, the Bakersfield, California, reported by Richard Bean, stated Willie Rivera has announced he will not seek reelection, and he is ready to move on. This set off much discussion by First Ward, longtime residents, community leaders, and political activists regarding the upcoming 2018 election for the next First Ward City Council member. Mr. Marvin Dean had not thought about ever running again for First Ward City Council. Recently, myself and many residents in Ward 1 and other citizens throughout Bakersfield have repeatedly asked Mr. Marvin Dean to consider running again. Mr. Marvin Dean, after much prayer, thinking about it, talking with family members and friends, and the opportunity of an open council seat in 2018. Earlier today, on behalf of Mr. Marvin Dean, I filed a candidate intention statement, Form 501, with Bakersfield City Council, City Clerk, Secretary, State Political Reform Division, and set up his exploratory committee to explore the run for 2018 Bakersfield City Council. With the election approximately 15 months away, it will allow time to gauge community support and development and list concerns residents want for the next councilman to address. Mr. Marvin Dean wants it to be very clear that it is, his decision in no way signals any displeasure with current First Ward Councilman, Mr. Willie Rivera. He has been doing a great job and will want to thank him for doing a good job. Mr. Marvin Dean is planning to support Mr. Rivera's 2018 reelection run before 2018 newspaper story.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Nathan Nemnich, regarding making a better Bakersfield.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Nathan Nemnich. I'm the founder of the Bakersfield Group, which you can find on meetup.com. I recently offered the city a plan that would lower taxes every year and eventually make Bakersfield self-reliant, create thousands of new jobs, and provide the city with hundreds of millions in new revenue, which could be used to improve the city and lower the crime rate. I would like to first thank the mayor for finally getting around to meeting with me personally. However, I need to say how sad I am that no one on this council is interested in what I am trying to do for this city. I'm sad that it took over eight months for me to get this "no thank you" letter. I am sad that none of you are really interested in lowering taxes as much as I am, especially because combined, if you look at it, all of you have spent over $2 million in campaign, excuse me, campaigning to be in the position you are in now, which would be probably over 20 times what it would take to get this thing started. And I am sad that you were all voted into office to find the very solutions that I've been trying to present to you. And if anybody has a plan, I'd like to have a quick show of hands. Does anybody have a plan that would lower taxes, create thousands of jobs?
We don't do that at this point.
All right. It's just me, then. I want you to keep me in mind every time you raise taxes, because the solution to lower taxes stood before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you received a response that explained why we were not able to move forward. Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
Teri Maxwell, regarding 24th Street lawsuit/Parsons.
Thank you. My name is Teri Maxwell, and I'm here on a couple items. First, you know, I'd like to say that I'm disgusted that the city is suing 10 residents for $20,000. I don't know if the council is aware, but at this point, your team of lawyers has filed over at least five briefs, and by Friday, they will have appeared in court three times. Your council from down south charged you $3,000 for a day trip. So in trying to collect your $20,000, I would have to guess you spent maybe $30,000 at this point. Now, it'd be the same as me going into your clerk's office and saying, "Can I get change for $100?" And them handing me back $150. I would also request that, when I left this dais, I made it clear that if you're going to blame people for the expense on 24th Street, fighting this fight in Sequa, that you only have one group of people to blame, and that's yourselves. Nobody was holding the gun to your head, forcing you to certify the EIR. I spent 45 minutes telling you why you shouldn't, and you still went ahead and did it. So don't blame this group, don't blame me. The people who voted for it should blame themselves, because you knew it was going to happen. Now, in this court proceedings, I thought it was pretty interesting to notice that there were two things I wanted to point out. First is, the first page, you can see, this is what Parsons charged the city for doing all of their work. The first one I want you to notice is the overhead cost, 125%, and then a fixed fee of $1,400. I can break that down even better when you start looking at how much they charge for each person to do nothing more than look and find different pieces of information. As you can see, your most expensive person was Robert Scales at $268.17 an hour. He spent 20 hours. Look at this. Does anybody in the city get paid this kind of money? 100, let's say the lowest is $129.95. For the 72 hours of labor, when you include those fixed fees, which I don't know what fixed fees are, but when you include that, the per-hour cost was $221.36, you guys are going after $20,000. I would suggest that somebody at the end of this meeting request an independent forensic auditor or accountant to look and see how much Parsons has overcharged you all these years. The judge took 25% of this bill off the top, because he said it was outrageous, and he's not an accountant. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor, we have two speakers regarding the next subject. The first one, Patrick Jackson, regarding police cameras and oversight committee.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, I'm Patrick Jackson, President of the NAACP. I've come to the council on numerous occasions about the body cameras and the community oversight committee. I met recently with our city manager. Congratulations on your 25 years, doing a great job, and also our great chief, Lyle Martin, on the budget and creating something that can help impact the city. As I've stated before, that you all have known for quite some time, that we are the number one worst, have the worst police department in the nation when it comes to killing an excessive force, and the DOJ is involved, and the microscope is here on Bakersfield. And I know that this past week, there was a horrific incident in Charlottesville, and we had a rally with a group of individuals throughout the community at the Liberty Bell, and the esteemed mayor, Go, attended that and thanked her for coming out and speaking on behalf of that incident. And one of the topics that she stated was love, and love is an action word, and the issues that we are having here in the city of Bakersfield, the high depths and things that are happening within our department. Our chief needs the tools in order to help build the department and correct the issues that are happening within our department. And so with this budget come forth, I've asked that the city council add this to the agenda. Again, love is an action word, and so we need a city council that is going to take action for the love of the citizens and the city. And so creating a police cameras and a community oversight committee. Other cities have done it, they've seen vast improvements within their cities, and so I believe that we should, as a city council, the people that are taking the love into action, should take some type of action and not sit here and just twiddle our thumbs and not have anything to do in the actions of trying to correct this issue. And I've spoken with the city manager, if there's something that we need to do as a community, create a bond, put something on the ballot, whatever needs to happen, I believe the city council needs to take some type of action and have some type of voice in moving forward and trying to help mitigate this problem that is happening in our city. I don't think we can no longer just sit here and be silent, we can no longer sit here and not do anything and not do nothing. I think it's very important that as a city council, as you sit on this council and having that sting of having that type of stigma in our community and being looked upon across the nation and across the world of having a department of such, and as other cities that don't have that type of title are moving forward and trying to create solutions, are trying to create ways in order to improve their cities. And so we're urging that city council that you add this to your agenda for the next city council meeting. I know that if going through the budget committee, we will continue to meet with the city manager and the chief on solidifying a budget of how much this is going to cost the city, but whatever it needs to take, we need to make sure that action is done for our city and the community throughout Bakersfield, because our children need it, our community needs it, and I know you guys are looking at the clock, but I know I'm a little over.
You're over your time.
So thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nadine Escalante, regarding body cameras.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Nadine Escalante. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a scripture I'd like to share with you, it's God's message. "But just as one bad apple doesn't ruin the whole bushel, there are still plenty of good apples left. So I'll preserve those in Israel who obey me. I will not destroy the whole nation. I will bring out my two children from Jacob and the heirs of my mountains from Judea. My chosen will inherit the land; my servants will move in." I'm here to talk about the body cameras and the panel. I'm a parent. I'm here taking time for my children's first day at school to come and talk about a very important issue, on behalf of myself, my children, every child that I have been a part of. I've worked in probation for 10 years in juvenile home. I know the abuse that happens at the hands of our law enforcement. I had no idea as my children in juvenile home would tell me about these incidents, I didn't believe them. I was raised in middle-class neighborhood, I never experienced this. Now, educated, having a great career, I'm experiencing this now. I'm experiencing peace officers coming to my house, lying, accusing me of being not cooperative because I refused to come outside of my house, which is my legal right. It is time for body cams. It is no longer an option, it's a requirement, it's a requirement for our safety, it's a requirement for Bakersfield to progress. Go back to being beautiful Bakersfield. And the reserve, the review board, probation, Kern County Sheriff's Department, your own department, your internal affairs has come out to my house and called me a liar. When we have our own review board, who is not of this county, not of city council, family members, et cetera, we are going to be able to have a fair, just hand in looking at issues that people would not be complaining about if they did not happen. And I know personally, I have been talking about this issue for 10 years, 10 years of my time you have taken from my children. And when I have been able to talk and been blessed to talk to the Department of Justice about the injustice that's going on in our city, it's shameful, it's extremely heartbreaking, because this is not what my parents grew us up in. And so I ask you all to please no longer consider it an option, it's a requirement. The time is now, our children, our grandchildren, our future generations to come are going to live and thrive from it. So I think it's very interesting this evening, we talked about awareness and change, but Mr. Tandy brought to Bakersfield, it's time for awareness and change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalante. Next speaker, please.
O.C. Crawford, regarding invitation to an awards banquet and inspirational writings.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is O.C. Crawford, and this is my second time at one of these meetings, and I've been away from Bakersfield for a long, long time. Born and raised here, but I went away and been back one year. When I left, it was, I didn't care much for Bakersfield, I couldn't wait to get away. Right after high school, school I left. After about 50 years, I'm back, been back one year, and I have discovered that Bakersfield is full of beautiful, good, loving, serving people. It's like, how can I meet these people? First I said it's a coincidence, oh, it's just, I'm just lucky. But every, almost, not every day, but almost every week, I'm meeting people that are doing incredibly wonderful things. things, they're not looking to be noticed or a pat on the back, but they're doing it because they care, they love, like the gentleman said. We need love. I think Bakersfield has everything. We have the economy, we have the beauty, it's a wonderful place, but to make Bakersfield number-one, an ideal city, we need love. Am I over?
Something, I think, I think something went wrong with our timer.
I think so, too.
Yes, you have, you are over at this point.
Okay.
It had stopped for a minute, but just, two seconds.
You're invited to this, too, Mayor, so, and I got one for every, all of the council members.
Thank you very much, you can give those to our clerk, and thank you for sharing with us this evening. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Karen King, regarding Golden Empire Transit District.
Welcome, please introduce yourself, Ms. King.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I'm Karen King, I'm the CEO of Golden Empire Transit District, and I just wanted to bring you up to date on a few things that have been happening at Gett that you might find interesting. We have two handouts, one that looks like a PowerPoint presentation, it's just a couple of slides pulled from a PowerPoint, and another which is actually something that was taken from the Bakersfield Californian, and I'd like to speak to the two of those. The first one that looks like this is some results from a survey that we did, both of our riders and of community members and civic leaders, and I thought you'd like to know a little bit about the people that are riding our buses here in Bakersfield. 78% of the people, or 76% have no access to a car. That might be because 54% of them live in a household with an income of less than $20,000. 68% are in the age group of 18 to 44, which is young compared to ridership in other urban areas. We carry a lot of students, both Cal State Bakersfield and Bakersfield College, as well as to the high schools. 39% are Latino, 31% white. 26% are employed full-time, in fact, taking the bus to work is the number-one trip purpose for our riders, along with going to school. Some of the things that we learned, because we wanted to know how satisfied they were with our service, was that 81% of riders are satisfied or are extremely satisfied with our service. They like that the bus routes are direct and take them to where they want to go, and they find that there's a high value for the cost of the trip to them. Some of the things that they'd like us to pay attention to is having more frequent service to facilitate better transfers between routes, and to have more early morning, late night, and weekend service. Now, of course, there's a budgetary impact to do that, and while we'd like to be able to provide more, we provide what we're able to within our budget. On our Gettalift Paratransit Services, which is our curb-to-curb service, they're very pleased with the service, they see it as a lifeline service, they'd like to see more during the peak hours when everyone wants to go. And from the community, we found out that most people's trip that they make is 10 miles or less, which is a trip that you can make by bus, and 50% said they would be willing to try the bus. And if I might, just read one paragraph.
Ms. King, your time is up, but we will be happy to, once you point out which one, and then we'll.
I will, it's this little paragraph right here, that says that for every dollar that Golden Empire Transit spends, there is a return of $5.80 to the community.
Thank you so much for sharing with us, and we will read that paragraph. Thank you for highlighting that. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under appointments, we have two appointments for Ward Five to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the expiration of terms of regular committee member David Taylor and alternate committee member Patrick Fraz. Terms expired November 2016. Applications for appointment were received from Crystal Pinthong and Myra H. Anthony.
Councilmember Freeman, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to defer the appointment for the main representative to keep Bakersfield beautiful tonight, just because we had some, we've had some confusion in what's allowed for city employees and some things like that that need to be worked out with the, with the potential member. But I would like to move on and appoint the alternate member, who, you know, what works out may become the permanent member, but her alternate member was, was it Crystal or Cynthia Pingu?
Cynthia Pinthong.
I thought, Pinthong, Cynthia, as our alternate committee, and I believe we, that takes the vote of the whole council to approve that recommendation.
Yes, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under appointments, we have one appointment at large to the miscellaneous civil service board due to the resignation of board member Karen Shaw, to a term that expires December 31st, 2019. Applications for appointment were received from Crystal Pinthong and Roy Meyer.
As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. Although the council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will be made public by the clerk. Based on the results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review We're just waiting a minute to get the ballots. While we're doing that, why don't we just stand up for a minute, take a minute, stand up, and we'll sit down if you'd like.
Mayor, I don't believe that the ballots are ready, so perhaps if you could announce who the candidates are again, the council members can simply write them down on a piece of paper, and the clerk can tally the vote.
Thank you. So, we have Crystal Pinthong and Roy Meyer. And if you'll just write down on a piece of paper. Crystal Pinthong and Roy Meyer. And the spelling on Pinthong is P-I-N-T-H-O-N-G, Roy Meyer is M-A-I-E-R.
Mayor Go question, I think we just appointed Crystal to something else, so.
Right, so, just give me whoever you want.
Okay.
Mayor, the tally reveals that Roy Meyer is appointed unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, please. Oh, we have to have a motion, I'm sorry. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move the vote findings.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
One appointment to Ward Five Planning Commission due to the expiration of term of Commissioner Richard Schwartz. Term expired April 30, 2017. Applications for appointment were received from the following: Richard Schwartz, Larry Coleman, and Crystal Pinthong.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation of the council that we appoint Larry Coleman as planning commissioner for Ward Five.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
One appointment to the Bakersfield Youth Commission, also to Ward Five, due to a vacancy created by alternate Commissioner Jessica Flores, assuming the position as the regular commissioner. This term expires July 20th, 2018. One application for appointment was received from Lee Beggin.
Councilmember Freeman.
I'd like to recommend that we appoint Lee Beggin as the youth commissioner for Ward Five, and that is a motion.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And I see we have Mr. Coleman in the audience, so, Mr. Coleman, you can just wave there, thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to your service on the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are any of the other appointees in the audience? I don't think so, but thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AO for approval. A staff memorandum has been received requesting item 8AI be removed from the agenda.
8AI is removed. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member have any conflict on any of these items? Does any council member wish to pull any of these items for separate consideration? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve items 8A through 8AO, except for 8AI.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes, it's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so that others may speak. We'll hear from, we'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. We ask you to step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up, and we ask you to end your statement quickly. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise and avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider a resolution ordering the summary vacation of a 20-foot-wide sewer easement within parcel three of revised parcel map 9630, located at the southwest corner of Coffee Road and Brim Hall Road.
Mr. Fidler, would you like to make comments?
Madam Clerk, can you please bring up the screen? Honorable Mayor and council members, on July 19th, 2017, your council adopted a resolution ordering the vacation of Presidio Way. Sorry, give me one second, I'll bring that up. Vacation of Presidio Way, which is in southwest corner of Coffee Road and Brim Hall, as shown in the attached, on the PowerPoint on the screen. Presidio Way was vacated, which now leads to the developer, the property owner wanting to vacate the 20-foot easement that's shown in the attachment as highlighted in red. There are no sewer services within this area, and there will be no sewer services as part of the development, so the sewer easement is no longer necessary. The staff concurs with this vacation, so, the staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If so, would you just raise your hand, please? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor, I move staff's recommendation on this item.
You have a motion, please cast your vote.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appeal by Christian Ramirez of the July 11th, 2017 decision of the Board of Zoning Adjustment to deny a conditional use permit to allow a recycling center for the purchasing of California redemption value containers from the public in a C1 neighborhood commercial zone district located at 3300 Plans Road. A staff memorandum has been received transmitting correspondence from Israel Ramirez and Diana Andrilli. Staff recommends this item be continued to the October 11th city council meeting.
Ms. Kitchen, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor Go. As the clerk indicated, we did receive correspondence today from the applicant on this item requesting that it be continued to October 11th, to allow them to gain additional information from CalRecycle. The state staff concurs with that recommendation and recommends continuance to October 11th.
Thank you. So, staff is recommending that this matter be continued to October 11th, 2017, and that the council not take any action tonight. Therefore, our desire is to have people speak about the issue on October 11th and not tonight. Is there anyone here on this item who was going to speak tonight? If so, when I open the hearing, only come forward and speak if you wish to oppose the continuance, oppose the continuance. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who is opposed to having this matter continued. Seeing none, may I have a motion to continue this matter to October 11th, 2017?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion, please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, League of California Cities Annual Conference Appointment of Voting Delegates and City Position on Conference Resolutions.
Thank you. Mr. Tandy, would you like to address this?
Actually, Mr. Tellia is going to handle it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. Steve Tellia with the City Manager's Office. It's that time of year again where we prepare for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which is scheduled for September 13th through the 15th in Sacramento, California. Typically, the league requires that the council select a voting delegate and either one or two alternate delegates to represent the city at the, the business meeting, which is held on Friday, the 15th, at 12:30. And just a caveat, whoever is selected would have to remain at the conference to attend that business meeting. We have several council members, including the mayor and the vice mayor, that are planning to attend at the time that we put the staff report together. That includes Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Smith, council members Sullivan, Rivera, Parlier, and Gonzalez. So all are eligible to be nominated or selected as the, the delegate and alternate. Excuse me. In addition to that requirement, the league also has submitted a couple resolutions that will be considered at the business meeting. There's a brief summary of each resolution in the staff report. Staff from the city manager's office and from both the fire department and the police department have reviewed the two resolutions, both of which deal with public safety issues. And we concur with the resolutions and have recommended support. So unless there's any questions, I will defer to you on your selection of your voting delegate and alternate and position on the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Tellia. So there are a number of us going, and I'm wondering whether we have any volunteers at this time who would be willing to serve as the delegate or the alternate. So this would be going, and your willingness to serve as a delegate or alternate. We're looking for volunteers at this time. So if you are, go ahead and...
I don't think Friday will be a conflict for me. I know it will be for others, so I volunteer for that day.
Okay, there's...
And I have had my turn, so...
Unless Councilmember Sullivan wants to take it.
You've had your turn, so...
Yes, several times.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to volunteer?
You can put me down as an alternate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have Councilmember Parlier volunteering as the delegate, and Councilmember Rivera as the alternate. We also have the two resolutions before us, so, Councilmember Weir, is there a motion? Please.
Make a motion to support the delegates and motion to support staff's, staff's recommendation on the two resolutions.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier, Councilmember Rivera, thank you for your sacrifice. You'll have a wonderful time, I'm sure, staying until that time. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Just briefly, I'd like to invite the council and the community to a community pedestrian and bicycle safety training on Tuesday, August 22nd, from 3:30 to 8:00 p.m. Here, we will learn how to make walking and biking safer in Bakersfield. This is an exciting workshop that's hosted by California Walks, the city of Bakersfield, the county of Kern, Get Bus, Kern Family Healthcare, the Boys and Girls Club, Kern Medical, Kern Council of Governments, Public Health, and OTS. So it should be a promising event, and the entire community is invited. If you're interested in registering, you can call 661-912-1406, or just show up the day of the event, Tuesday, August 22nd, at the Boys and Girls Club on Nile Street.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, one of Bakersfield's finest is going to be laid to rest, Sergeant Dennis Moore. Sergeant Moore was a, a good honorable man. My condolences go out to his family and to his brothers and sisters with the Bakersfield Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Just to echo that, tomorrow, River Lakes Community Church, and we just thank Sergeant Dennis Moore for his service. I've just heard wonderful things from his colleagues about who he was as a person and his wonderful service to our community. And so, this evening, if we have no further comments, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Okay, Councilmember Sullivan. A late buzz-in.
Yes, it was. Thank you. Yes, I, I just briefly want to thank Diane Hoover and Jackie Kitchen. They invited me along with Jackie's husband and Diane's very, very nice, nice friend to First Friday. It was wonderful. I, I didn't, I, I was delighted to be there. It was warm, but we had fun. And I was very impressed to see all of the vendors and, and just appreciated the, the work that had gone into the setups, and, and we just walked around and started at Crush? Crush? And then, of course, it just looks great down there. You have to go down and just really look around to appreciate how wonderful our downtown is looking. I saw a lot of people that I knew. I was really surprised to see such a wonderful turnout. But First Friday is, is a place, that downtown is the place to be on the first Friday of every month, and it's year-round. So it just gets bigger and better and, and more, more appreciated. So thank you, Diana and Jackie. I really, really enjoyed it. I've told my kids about it, and we're going to start, just, we're going to start going. It's, it's, it was really, really a great time. Food, and, and it was wonderful to really look around and appreciate all this going on downtown. And Alan, thank you for your service. You know, seriously, I can remember the early, before you came, walking on Chester Avenue, thinking, it's impossible. Downtown can never come back. I mean, it was just, the, the buildings, the windows were boarded up and, and graffiti, and it went downtown. Chester Avenue went through a very difficult, very, very discouraging, disheartening time. And then you came on board, and, and, my goodness, and I was shortly after that, so we have gotten our names because of you. You're the ship that you run, hands-on, can-do type guy. You love projects, and you see them, you, you get them going, keep them going, and how lucky for Bakersfield. We were just, we were a city that needed direction, and, and now, because of your leadership and, and wonderful ideas, we have our name on a lot of good stuff downtown. Karen mentioned some of the things, but anyway, thank you for your service, and, and Bakersfield now is a place to, a wonderful place to live, a place to be proud to live. And so, Alan, you are the city manager. The buck stops with you, you know that, and you can handle it. You do, you will continue to, and just thank you for all your good, hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. And just back now to the memory of Sergeant Dennis Moore. I'd like us to take a moment of silence, and then I'll be adjourning in his memory. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll adjourn this, this meeting in memory of Sergeant Dennis Moore. Thank you.